Everybody start.
Yes.
Because.
The Katie.
Sorry, Zoom instructions, if you want to give any instructions. Larry.
Um, I guess this if you're going to. Need to speak, Gar will make a comment, just raise your hand, it'll be down in the reaction. Section.
Okay. All right, I'm moving on to item number four, people monthly report, so you all received minute from July nineteen. Two thousand twenty two, are there any additions or corrections? Not an entertaining motion to approve.
It's Molly, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular council town council meeting, thanks July eight.
That was this is Brent, I second it.
On the second, all those in favor signify by three nine.
Aye, aye.
All the same time, motion period. I am beating Roger, registered Laura Jessica.
Um, we did have the. Obviously, you can see that the free month usage for the month of. July had significantly increased, which I think. Dan had given out the usage numbers for those, other than that, I don't think there was anything. Significant on here. I think um. I don't think you had, guy didn't have anything significant here either.
Are there any questions?
I thought her. Motion to approve.
Motion, do I have a second?
Dan, repeat, second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by say aye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion periods.
You threw me off a little bit because my. My council minutes, things were actually next, so yeah. Um, I think you all got the metrics for the minutes. Did you guys have any questions on those because we were still within our ten day objective. Posting for both council, VDA and like mission.
Good job.
Yeah, can I just ask a question on regarding the minutes? With Zoom, um, can somebody come in and listen to the minutes? If they wanted a more detailed summary of the meeting and they would do that through you, correct?
Correct, through the open door.
Thank you.
All right, item five, monthly reports, financial reports, Jessica.
For the general technical account with that consists of twenty one funds, we had revenue month to date for the month of July of one hundred and eight thousand. Five hundred and eighty six dollars and fifty nine cents with disperse dispersance of ninety thousand three hundred. Thirty two dollars and two cents for an ending balance of one million five hundred and eighty two thousand four hundred fifty five dollars and fifty four cents. The sewer fund. Checking account, which has two active funds in it, we had a revenue of seventy thousand eight hundred sixty five dollars and sixty seven cents. Dispersion of eighty thousand five hundred thirty six dollars and fifty three cents and the current the balance ending ended at one hundred and sixty four thousand. Six hundred sixty four dollars and fifty cents.
All right, so Marshall report.
We placed firm and handled the buying report in March July. That did, I've been identified by Gulf Cart inspections at forty one traffic and work with both. Sheriff's Office handles five reports from town, five reports from Clear Lake. We worked a total of two hundred and six and a half hours, road had ten hours on the boat, total of two hundred point six and a half hours. Total mileage driven were one thousand sixty. Clear work. As far as the police department had one theft, sorely complained, reading the system alarm with trespassing. And two property damage records. Sheriff's Office and Clear Lake County had a property damage, found property first hundred drive, we got a problem, we'll check. And Sheriff's Office in Platte Town handled an alarm, secured some of this, a purchase complaint in. Couple things, and was not here last month, so I completed a touch on bond for last month, but the radar sign. On West Clear Lake Drive was posted last week, so start getting data for the traffic of West Clear Lake Drive just off of. Seven hundred east. Here next month. And then came up with the golf cart, the underage kids on those. Got a suggestion from a community member about maybe posting some signs, I think Brett might have talked about this last month, to get a quote. For some signs, I'm sure this got out last, this is basically what the sign would look like, it'd be an eighteen by eighteen inch sign. As an informational sign, so it would be blue and white for estate statute, what that have to be. To look like, we got some estimates on those for the post signs, for ten of those to be posted around the town. And the estimate back at the beginning of July was. One thousand four hundred fifty four dollars and twelve cents to get the signs made, shipping and also the post for those and then. Yeah, guy with more help figure out exactly where the best location would be to have those posted and that guy will get those posted if something you guys want to pursue. If it's approved, then go ahead and move on with that.
And Jessica, would you have a little bit of extra in the budget, correct?
Um, how much is in that one fifteen hundred, I believe? The sign budget, I don't think you've ordered once this year of any.
That. Quote is now. Done, is there only a quote for thirteen days, so we have to get another quote or estimate from maybe the same price, I think you'll hire. That was fifteen days, barely thirty days. I was fifteen. They're fifteen or thirty days, so long the quote was good, so we have a reset and get fair about the quarter fact exactly. I guess it's gonna be somewhere within that area.
So you got a long time on the.
I'll have to take some of my songs, it used to take two weeks. So. Part of that, part of that figure though, did include installation, the four by fours, that's along those lines to go.
Yes, that's for the posts. And the making of the signs and the shipping of the. Material here for the town hall.
So due to the timeframe being fifteen to thirty days and the distance between the meetings, I may make a motion right now that we proceed forward. To purchase the signs for up to one thousand five hundred dollars and if we need appropriate ones at the next meeting, to cover the gap, we do it so we can move forward.
It's Molly, I'll second that.
I have a motion, I have a second. More discussion.
We have a question, is that the appropriation budgeted for, we have that.
Is in the sign.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna say just like.
Exactly, guys department, so it would come under the MTH fund, but we do have appropriation for it, yes, and I know. Normally, we have a lot of sign thieves, but this year we must not have had, don't take.
They've been working on the county streets, leaving the town of Clear Lake stronger.
I also have a question. Of the signs. Um, so I think I actually had this conversation with Molly. As far as if the signs are gonna be effective or not, I actually cannot answer if they are going to be effective or not unless we start seeing a decline in. Underage kids operating call parts, obviously. So that's just something we gotta watch for and watch them and reflect our violations that we have. As expected, we're getting closer to the weekend, but the sign, by the time the signs get here and get voted, after Labor Day. Typically, after Labor Day, through until about Memorial Day, winter time, a lot of golf cart activity. So we may not really see any measurable difference until next summer.
Yeah, so we could, we could just report that.
Yes.
I think the important thing to note, Dan, is that we're showing the public, we're listening and we're trying to react, and this is a big visual. That's happening and also a good way for us to communicate to the people that are visiting our community, what is expected.
Yeah, well, no discussion on that point, that wasn't channeled, I just like could have some effect. Count measures are being. Future.
Still have a motion and a second on the floor, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by say aye.
Aye.
All the same side.
And just one other update on the police vehicle. Dodge is not taking orders until October. Still waiting to hear back from Chevy in Florida when they are able to take orders for the city, so. Maybe it'll definitely be next year before we take.
I can tell you updated on trucks now they're ported to our areas for utility trucks.
So just for a budget purpose, purpose, if they push that back, I mean, do you foresee Dodge pushing that back because I can't uncover the funds unless you're in a purchase order? Within this year.
It's hard to say.
Okay.
They pushed it back from being to September, not October. I just, I don't know.
Okay.
Is there anything on your metric chart or question? You're aware of?
Uh, don't believe so, we're still compiling all of that, all the information that is talking about is on that. Radar signs. Still getting the data from outer drive and. Think we had some. I think it started out with eighty percent compliance, we're up to like eighty two percent, it's only been there for just over a month now, I don't have any information on West Clear Lake Drive yet. All the other signs are staying pretty much where they're typically at for the month. Still, not, I'll say. skewed, nicely skewed, a good word for it, on Lakeside. Or like you drive because of the. Speed limit is fifty coming into town and where the radar sign is close to that and still picks up that fifty mile per hour zone before they get to the twenty five, but. I do run a lot of traffic out there, I can tell that. When I used to sit out there in the mornings, I'd get a lot, it's hard for me to get any traffic now and all. Just stop, I just sat out there for an hour, I made about forty five minutes, I mean, also, just for the meetings, I think it's definitely having some effect out there, it's just that skewed with the. Fifty to twenty five. All the other, everybody else, all the other radar signs are. We're in the ninety percentile as far as traffic being at, we're looking at twenty miles per hour.
Yeah, I, I thought it was interesting that the volume of traffic only increased five percent of last month. I would have guessed a lot more based on. Some of the other metrics. See how it compares, you're over here, so you get more data, I think this has been, you know, I'll say, you know, I really think this this speed radar program associated metrics really done. It's a good program for. Thanks for all the work.
Any questions?
I have a question and a comment, of course, um, three just sort of leads, is there anything you could share, is there? A trend?
Those are all from the aqua.
Thank you.
I talked to about that.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was, that was.
Yep, the only one, the aqua most complaints between nine a or nine P M and I think the lights were close to midnight. County responded one or two of those, I think we responded to one of them, I did have a conversation with the manager of the aqua about the noise and depending on what day of the week it was, weekends, things like.
Yeah, no, you did, that's all I needed, and on the theft, is that anything concerning, just in light of what has happened in the garage just in the past?
No, that actually may not be a theft. It was a plot of the boat. They have either stolen or it might have just fallen off.
They came home and it wasn't.
It was, it was recently changed and. Could have been a theft, it could have been just stolen, so.
Okay, great, and then just one other comment, I'm glad to see the marine binoculars were on the budget, so glad to see that. And just a general comment, you and I have, and I think we've discussed it, but I would be remiss not to say it, ten hours on the lake in July. Is pretty low considering that's a heavy vacation month, we have fireworks, we have kids and ski shows, so hopefully next July, that will.
Obviously, we're, we're especially, we're hopefully working on that.
Thank you, and thanks for everything, you and all of us.
Any other questions, Chris? All right, fire department report.
Okay, for the town of Clear Lake, we have. Three medical assists and one mutual aid for the clearly town step, we had one rubber sprayer, one vehicle accident and one vehicle accident. Injury for grand total of seven for the region. Areas of concern, twenty twenty three will be the final year for the contract or the fire department. So that is something that we will need to start pushing forward and begin negotiations on as soon as possible. File, or the report is on file.
Any questions, Brent? All right, so many that have been reporting.
As far as I O Ps. We had a new home for the waggers at four twenty six Point Park. Drive by the Dog Range. He's got a new garage with Joss, one sixteen Sunset Bay, owned by Welland Homes. Still working with the movies. On their new home, so wait for some additional information from them. For their house at seven oh eight South Clear Lake Drive. Bob Busher is. Was, is building a new home for the three, three. Three fifty six East Clear Lake Drive, also going in. Brown is working on a. Containing wall and new patio and. One sixty six West Clear Lake Drive. Also on outer, outer bank at two eighty drive. Can. These parts, whores, he's got a new garage, cement pad and new patio and replacing the sidewalk. And then we have Colson, I have a new driveway. So. Actually, they already started, well, they had a permit and they were over in the lot coverage. So right now, we gotta stop work on that, I'm working with them to kind of resolve that. With their contract, so I think we have a public storm with that. As far as the planning commission. The Skitters. Had a rezoning request. Taken a portion of their lot that's currently serving district to, we want to, actually, that's a special to be. Like residential, they'd like to rezone it and PCs recommend, recommend you to deny that, if actually they're, they're recently the Skitters. Were moved that. Decided to leave their application for that reason. As far as B D A. We had five variants, two for the waggers, for a structure exceeds the lake yard setbacks, that was denied. Next one was for a structure. No, so instructors allowing the lake yard, that one was. We decided to. Or go, go forward that one at the hearing. Then we also had, the singles had three variances. One was for a. Home setback to the road that was approved. They also had a setback for a hot tub, which is considered like solar restructure to the lakeside building line, that was also approved. They also had one for their garage and also garage in the LA lot and they had to set back. Due with the murder property line, that was also. Far as video updates, we're, we'll be going through the last, there's a senior to do tonight, that'll be the, that'll be all the video updates. That we have on the docket right now, and those will be reviewed by the town council today. That this disposition. As far as the Hughes home. We're, though, that hasn't, hasn't made any progress on the order of enforcement. That we had for the last town council meeting, I've talked to him, he understands that he has the number of funds to comply with all the items that we get on the order of enforcement. So he, he's, he thinks he'll, he'll get there. As we see.
So there, on the Hughes property, we have one milestone as of July twenty first, we energize the home, but that one was satisfied.
No, he, he did talk to electrician and got the electrician's recommendation to disconnect the whole circuit. Circuit panel and just put one outlet. And last time I talked to him, he, he hadn't had it, which was a week and a half ago, he says he's still working on getting the man to do that, but he was planning on.
So that, there's a plan, but it hasn't been asked. Right. And the next milestone is August twenty ninth, is the structural elementary board from professional engineering.
Yeah, he said he did talk to our structural engineer that we had go through the house and he said. He said, he went through his plan verbally and was, according to Mr. Hughes, he said the. That the structural engineer agreed with his plan, I asked him to, to put a plan together and writing and have the structural engineer verify that, that he actually approves his plan. And that's one of the milestones he needs for the.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
No, I can say thank you for all the work you're doing, you look at the report and there's a lot of so, so thank you.
All right, moving on, super attendance report.
I worked one hundred and seventy seven and a half hours this month, Denver worked at one hundred and sixty. I had zero road cut permits, two demo permits and two letters of non objection. I had twenty eight locates, seven alarm calls, replaced two grinders, we didn't set any out this month, or we didn't repair any, we set six up. We have ten grinders set up and ready to go in, we still have fourteen of them in the boxes. Average daily flow is ninety thousand fifty one gallons per day. Sewer department summary, the pumps that are at sea, I'm being rebuilt, we're sitting waiting on. Little tiny parts that don't seem to show up. They're all on back orders. We do sewer truck had drove a total of one hundred and fifty eight miles this month. Street department, I have estimate for the tree trimming. Um, we can discuss that and the street truck mileage and the duck truck was a hundred and five.
Said you want to discuss the.
Yeah, I was waiting for. So the estimate I got was from Sevitz. They kind of broke it down. In three sections. We had South Clear Lake Drive. They're gonna trim fifteen feet up and five feet back off the roads and that included. For that portion, they estimated it was South Clear Lake Drive, outer drive, Buck Point Chapel. Oh. Yeah, and that was that section and that was six thousand. East Clear Lake Drive, Sandpoint and Point Park was six thousand. And then. The remainder, West Clear Lake Drive and Lakeview was thirty five hundred. And left in my tree and snow budget, right now I had a three thousand two hundred and forty eight dollars. And I still have to build a cobstone.
So this is trimming up fifteen feet, five foot back from.
Once, to the road. Yeah, I mean, they were from what? Where do they start the five foot?
From the edge of the road, basically. They, I said up to five feet, but the main thing was to give us, you know, at least a foot or two away from the asphalt as much as they could. So.
Do they have the authority to be inside energized zones?
They have in the past.
Power lines. Okay.
We made our seventh, it's one of the biggest tree.
Yeah. So, I mean, they, last time they did Lakeview, they went right up and around them.
Great, knowing a little bit about this business, I mean, does Snipscow approve of them? Doing that, number one.
One, I haven't asked, other than I've called Snipscow, I don't know how many times you try to get them to do it and they'll come out and snip some branches and that'll be it.
Well, I mean, this is, this is all legal issue, but I think we need some type of. Letter from them saying that it's all right and they're going there, heading around, basically a live line. Because that's, that's a huge liability to the town.
Right.
And then, number two is all these properties that the right away. Doesn't really exist. Um, what are we doing with those?
Yeah.
Because technically.
We can't touch it.
Now, if the right of ways, which some of the properties goes to the middle of the road, you can't touch anything. I know that there's a, a lot of houses on South Clear Lake Drive that are that way.
Yeah.
So unless you get a letter from the property owner stating that you've got their trees back. Are we, you get a liability?
So maybe you have to get. Maybe you guys would have to get with the attorney and ask what you can and can't do in there, so. Next go from the power perspective, but the, you know, and then the town attorney from the property owners perspective.
And Sevitz may have an agreement with them too, since Sevitz has done so much.
So like that. Then our hands, where they start doing. Kind of. Then take a look at all the properties. Then take a look at all the properties and see where. Or that right away is because I don't want to touch your creatures and stuff in a right way.
Maybe people are in. Hey. One of the bad ones is the the corner when you're coming out. Uh going by the farm, uh marine lines, historic units, you come out and you go to take a left. On seven hundred going towards one twenty.
That is then cut by someone.
Has it? I don't know who, but it was cut. Recently.
Sometime over the weekend, I believe, because I don't remember being cut Friday and it was cut yesterday.
He he was out of this weekend doing that. Okay, that's how I'm out there work. I wasn't. Yeah. I. Sorry, no. But the tree extended in the right way you trim that. You know, the trees that all the. In the right way you can pressure it, trimming anything that's in the right way. On the top of it.
Yeah. I mean, the price and the prices are what I'm used to, but without the other. I'm kind of getting to say. Move forward with everything.
So follow up conversation with Nipco and Sevitz or Sevitz and then Nipco, is that?
Correct. I mean, it's something that does not have that, so we need to go to Nipco. Like I said, we need to. That would be nice. To have all the right ways. Identify where we can. So I think we have some more homework to do. Streets are ground, the world, so. Yeah, I think it's I think it's important, I want to I want to thank uh. Guy for responding to the concern, giving the estimates, I think it's important. This has been a one time deal, it's important to get everything in place. For the long preventative maintenance side. Where we'll be doing it year over year or in some fashion, so. Uh great action items. We'll get a a program together. And if it's not this year, it's.
Lastly, if I understood it correctly, uh the proposal that that the numbers you have added about fifteen five, correct? And we have how much in the budget for that? Not nearly that couple thousand.
Three thousand two hundred and forty eight and that's also why it's known as all company. Oh, not my soul, just my soul game.
Yes. We got some some more work to do on that. Any other questions for Guy before I move on? Just some observation about his metrics, uh you can note that July is being about ninety thousand gallons per day. Uh it's the same rate that we experienced during COVID. And it's also double rate uh from yeah. Um so those were two things that stuck out. Um. The other thing that uh that we experienced was basically uh very few problems with the system. So we're we're thankful for that because uh. Guy and I were discussing about readiness, uh knowing that July is historically one of the most busy. Uh months, but uh to see it back to the COVID rates was uh was a big surprise. Because the year today would spend uh. We've been more pre-COVID grades, so. Everybody was getting in their ratings this last month.
Hmm. Uh. If I could just jump back to the trees just for a second, I'm sorry for addressing. Did we get any other estimates from other tree services in the county?
No. I called a couple of them and they already called me back. I'm finding that a lot with journey estimates on those.
Anything else for that? All right, moving well. Well, what do you have? Let it go.
Yeah, you can go.
All right, council member. I've got a couple of things of the of that in a second. Uh one is. One is that we wrapped up our community outreach activities and uh. And what falls under community outreach was we held seven events at the yacht club at the T G R. Uh just to uh leave one of the council members. Timed up at those events, so I appreciate everybody's efforts there. I thought that it uh was good to get uh some good dialogue um. Uh out of those events uh and be able to uh have one on one conversations with residents. Uh the other thing that wrapped up was this last Saturday, it was our fourth Saturday in the know uh events at the town hall. Uh we covered sanitation, webpage improvements, uh U G O one on one class and and Zoom basics, so. I thought that was uh the attendance was down, so we're we're gonna take a look at on how we advertise that and and if uh. Um we need to just go back and make Zoom recordings so that they're available uh as opposed to uh coming to the town hall in person. Uh and accessible online, so I thought it was a good uh, you know, first year uh of outreach activities. And happy that uh happy that they uh were done. And I hope I hope everybody else happy they were done because there was a lot of effort. Uh. The other thing I'd like to to talk about is I had the opportunity to tour the Warfler sanitation site um. And discuss the community's feedback that I gathered at one of the Saturday in know sessions um. Uh Jeff Warfler was very appreciative of of the time uh that we spent together. Uh I personally gained an appreciation of his operation and the services that he does provide beyond his basic sanitation collection. Uh I was able to firsthand compare side by side uh the differences in the uh trucks, the rear hopper that is currently used. And the automated style trust that uh the industry is moving to. And quite frankly, he was he was very honest that uh that's where that's where he's moving uh for all of his collections is to the automated. Style across. Uh one of the advantages there is the amount of liquids uh that each truck can handle. And it became very clear to me when I looked at both of them side by side, why that why that is a big difference. Uh and uh. And uh talk to anybody offline as to as to what I learned there. We also discussed the new statute, knowing that uh our sanitation contract is up at the end of this year. There is a new statute out, Indiana Code thirty six nine thirty fifty three. Uh and it specifically is with regard to contracts with garbage haulers, it became effective July first, so. I'm working with our council to make sure that our bid and requirements instructions are up to speed with that new uh code. Uh and Jeff was also aware of it, um so. That was a good good part of our discussion. And then the next step uh with regard to our sanitation uh. Bid is I'll be bringing the council uh requirements, documents and bid instructions that I'm updating. Yes.
Good question on the cans. I know the last time we had to get uh cans replaced when they were switched because they did not co mingle with the equipment that was used. With the new equipment being implemented, so they're gonna be for massive change around like on trash or something.
No, uh no change required. Unless our provider changes.
Because right now they push them backwards, right? So they with the new trucks, I assume they wouldn't be there.
Yeah, uh that is true, uh the new trucks residents would be required to place them on the road. And uh and then uh put back. He was uh he was open to that, I know that there. Uh or he would understand if somebody had special needs uh whereby uh, you know. That couldn't be done and uh he's he's understanding where. So we would uh deal with those on case to case basis. Next, yeah, any other notes or reports?
It's Molly, I got one, um. Jessica and Damian um suggested since it is um the kind of Clear Lake's ninety year anniversary that we consider doing in an open house. Um sometime in October. The goal would be, you know, an informal gathering for to thank the residents for everything that they have done uh from an engagement perspective and the assistance that they've provided this year into council. And our commissions and boards. And it would also be an opportunity um for some of our partners like the fire department, our marshals um and to um. You know, be a part of the community and share more than just um driving past on the road. It would also be an opportunity for us to encourage residents to participate in a reach. And that's, I don't know, Dan or Jessica, if there's something you want to add on that.
So.
No.
I I just, I think it's important to celebrate our successes. And uh this was a nice opportunity to do that, we've got a long period and a lot of things to be proud of. Uh we put a lot of effort and focus and trying to focus this room on those achievements uh. And uh it's just nice to be able to get together as a community, so.
I I believe the celebration is a it's a good thing to do. I'm not sure the town's role versus the association's role historically. At the fifty year mark, it was a very big deal in the association. At quite a uh pull together of the whole community and and for outreach here, we maybe have fire and police and rescue boats here. But I I think that we might want to try to collaborate with the association and not. Take on a social activity in a governmental. Position here. I don't know if anybody's touched.
No, we have not, I have not, but I think that's a great.
We have two uh. Town officials like Scott Zer and it's on the P C and V C A and also Tyler. They are are on the association board, so. That might be something we want to pursue.
I don't know about a fiftieth party, but there was a what inspired this was the file that I had found with a seventy fifth year anniversary. Um and it was kind of when it looked like from the invitations and the pictures and stuff, it was. The town hall was built um and it was allowing people to come through and take a tour um and teachings um about the town hall specifically. So I thought was kind of like the new room, the new TVs, the new outreach programs and stuff, it might be a way to kind of. Not so informal like like you guys are up here, but a way to, you know, be able to talk to residents.
Just an idea.
Yeah.
Good. Yes, suggestion.
Anybody else?
Um I've got a couple of things on the light shields for a couple of the street lights, three units go, our finally came in. How the unfortunate part is we can't get any of the current sound here until mid September, it sounds like. So we'll still be waiting on those and I also have a call in to uh Nipco on. Landos or grinders here. If we have. But the two engineers that I used to talk to, both of them uh were fantastic, they said and always responded. They are walking with the next guy, so. Anybody else? Not on the one through right, but but sorry.
Confirm today, uh the economic council meeting. That I have the director will be independence next month to give an overview of student economics council. What they've done this year and what they're looking forward to next year, how it affects the town clearly as well.
Last call. Okay. I don't think I'm going to do this now. You know, we need to. Okay, let me uh please poke through this discussion. Uh I prepared a list uh that represents the uh infrastructure progress uh that we're currently under consideration. Uh to be recommended to council at a future date uh as we can forward in twenty twenty two and and even stretches into twenty twenty three. Uh the matrix uh describes each project, its latest estimates, uh which uh estimates are still coming together uh as indicated where there's a T B R. Uh that essentially means that we don't have a quote uh that we can plant our feet on there. Uh as well as the source of where the funds uh would come from uh to pay for the project, which is also under review. Uh by our clerk treasurer as it does. And and when the project would be executed um. And and how each of these projects ties back to our town objectives. Uh I'm listing the objective number there. So in all cases, so with regards to projects tied to objectives, they all tie back with the exception of one. Uh which is number eleven. So noting that the recommendations are not final, I'm not here presenting any advocate of any one of these per se. Um because there's still some ongoing work to complete estimates and uh and also validate uh the available funds. There are, however, uh I I feel two conclusions uh to present to council uh tonight with regards to the work. Um that's been done, uh the first is. Um the cost of the the maintenance and marshal buildings, this would be items two and three that are highlighted in gray. Uh. Uh our efforts have indicated that prices are are really inflated, largely uh we feel because of today's economy. And essentially making them unaffordable at this point in time. So I believe it makes sense uh to defer consideration of these two projects uh out into the future. And in the interim, uh do the engineering work uh to prepare. Um for the uh for the point in time which we're ready to uh to actually pull that trigger. And have the supporting documents and the design done that would be required to go get the samples. So that's one conclusion. Uh that I'm uh that I've come to, the other is that we uh we really started this concerted effort uh to target. Uh how we wanted to expand the uh A R P funds that we were given. Um and I think uh having gone through the effort uh that created this list, there are two that I'd like to. Uh offer to council for consideration. Uh at this point, again, I'm not asking for approval to pursue these, but to uh. Have kind of a general discussion as to whether these seem uh reasonable to council. Uh first of all, a criteria by which uh I'm I established this recommendation uh for the A R P funds. Is that uh there are large projects um that are fall within the available funds. Uh and start in twenty twenty two and complete by twenty twenty three. And offer the town recurring year over year benefit. Uh really financial benefit is what I what I was looking at. And there are two projects that really uh floated to the top uh looking at that criteria, one is to improve operations of the street utility. And zoning departments by deploying a G I S based uh information system. Uh that contains uh all of the as built kinds of information on streets, sewers, drainage. And zoning information that uh that Guy and Larry uh, you know, s. Have to work fairly hard to to get to the final answer on in many cases or rely on that. Uh in other cases. And by improving those operations and making their jobs more efficient, that's the uh that's the year over year benefit. Uh that we'll see on that. The second one is to increase the town hall uh efficiency. The second one is to increase the town hall efficiency, mitigate the risk of floods. Mainly by increasing the insulation in the building, balancing the HVAC, adding a backup generator and a some backup some pump in the basement. Now we have a history of flooding in the basement and we currently are susceptible to power outages. And, and so the year-over-year kind of benefit there is lowering utility costs and any costs associated with recovering from a potential flood. So I'll stop there and see if there's some discussion, further discussion.
It's Molly, I've got a couple of questions. First of all, on items two and three that you wanted to defer. Four hundred, and I know these are estimates and your recommendation is to defer and I align with that completely. But as we move forward on that, I think as a group, we should have kind of look at that four hundred and twenty. That's an awful lot of money. So I don't know if there's things that can be adapted in that building that maybe don't have to be to the level that they are in the initial plans. So that's just my comment on that. I completely agree with the number one that makes so much sense because if it can help make the employees' jobs easier, I think that's super important. I don't know enough about item number six to really, you know, I'm not in here that much, so I, I trust that that's what the employees say. And that's something we need to seriously consider. But from my understanding, as I look at the estimates and I, I get their estimates, that's what we're over a hundred ten, and I think ARP monies, we've got it's between seventy-five and seventy-seven thousand dollars this year, and it has to be spent by this year. So one, what do we do going, what is the proposal moving forward if they go over what we get for AARP? ARP and then can those be done in the timeframe that's required by AR?
Yeah. So we actually have an update on the GIS system. That's looking like that's more than the twenty to twenty-five. I targeted, I targeted, targeted the two projects. So that we were assured of, of, of making amendments for the full value of the ARP. You'll notice in the second project, there's an additional fund should we need. And that'd be the CCD fund to cover any costs and above the ARP. So, so when our, when Jessica takes a close look at this, against these estimates and the funds that I've identified, we'll, we'll have you know, a certainty as to our ability to execute. Projects.
Dan, question? Yeah, right. Looking at your reference, item number six and the flooding in the basement, but we also have item number four, which is improving the drainage on the outside, is the anticipation that the drainage on the outside would deal with the flooding problem in the basement. We've put a lot of money into this building over the last year, whether it's technology upgrades, whatever it may be, we've done a lot of we made, we put a lot of money into this this year. Maybe, I guess my thought in looking through this is that we're worried about the basement. Maybe it's the parking lot and the drainage versus some pumps, a battery backup generator, yada, yada, yada. Maybe it's better off to get that because the parking and also if the parking lot is updated, that can also alleviate some of the parking concerns that have been a consistent issue for years.
Yeah, so guys, not worth this, we would have a final answer, but my understanding, discussions with guys, is that issue where the basement flooding is infiltration of water that comes off of around the perimeter, not so much running off of the parking area. The number four, what, what we're addressing there is that part of this, of that project is to actually increase the amount of area of pavement and address the sloping so that it gets routed into essentially deliberately defined lower kinds of holding retention, retention, thank you. And, and there's two locations for those retention pumps. This project runs to the north side of this building, which already has a natural slope to it. That'll be connected through conduit to a new area that borders Geckelitz Road. So I think they're unrelated, you know, if I interpreted guys, the conversation I had.
Well, my thoughts are similar to others. I think the first item is very beneficial and priority item. There's a lot of benefit as soon as it's deployed and long-term down road. The town hall, I think there's some items in there that we could prioritize. Certainly a backup generator, we don't have one here. Addition some phone for those times when we lose power or the water's overwhelming down there too. Good, right. Those would be my two top priorities. Second priority in the sixth item would be, I don't understand the HBA C system here, but I know there's times where we and residents are very uncomfortable, either hot or cold. We don't have a choice. It's either A or B. And if we could control that better. You know, it's not like we can wear jackets and sweaters, but certainly number one's generator backup pump. Number two's the comfort of this group. And then the others, let's see how serious we need it.
Yeah, thanks. That's a good point. Yours, this, this could be handled as a time stamp.
Yeah, yeah.
What I passed out to the council is I've looked at a couple of GIS systems, one of here, so company books, data. This is something that they, Remind uses right now to basically identify where handle covers are, so. They use a GPS device and they have a list of annual fees and the the data tablet and stuff like that. Pros and cons of that. I've also listed one that's basically a typical company called Lambert GIS. It's an S3 based GIS system. This one is probably the most used system out there as far as the point of error. Although if you've been on, you can see, down at the bottom, you'll see it says that's pretty hard. GIS is really S3 is the company. Our GIS is the program that they use to allocate to GPS devices needed that we need and also the annual fees for licensing. Gives the pros and cons of both of those along with where they are, because some of them have higher initial cost for the lower end of fee. Where I think that it's going to end up being about the same. And then as we were starting to do this meeting, I think it's updated estimate for that last item there, the MRGAS cost. That's based off of my prior knowledge and some of this. And with inflation, the email came back, worst case, very conservative, an upper of fifteen to twenty thousand. So you can update that, what that is, sets a company that comes in, locates every one of our grinders right now and, you know, I have houses recently that they still have trench going back to the house. All that includes training. Dan and I have talked about this and I guess my recommendation as an engineer would be to go with the S3, our GIS system. Just because I know that a lot of the companies that we use, engineering companies, something very similar, it's important, whereas the other ones more of a Google Maps type thing that basically we would have trouble. And with an RTI system, we could very conceivably download the map from the county auditor, lay it right up there. And it allows us then to also establish layers. So you could have all your, you know, inputs to play your powers and all that on one layer, you have all your grinders on another layer, or you're right away, so another layer. You know, if you're familiar with CAD and layering, it's, it's a wonderful tool. In order to see, and we can update, you know, our map like this, electronic map, basically would be, you know, always up to date, so.
Yeah. Well, you had something in the audience.
Yeah, anything's to be honest, both systems are going to do exactly what you look at and need. And that's going to be a major help to us, you know, designing this. And I think either one, you know, you can do endless amounts of assets in either of them, so.
Is it easier to work with it in a community that is running off of the GIS system, since you guys are?
Um, yeah, yes.
Should pay us money in the long run.
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as again, it's only as good as what's inputted in.
Fair enough. Sorry.
Wow, I'd like to make a motion of public comment.
I have a motion and a second go, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same time, try to follow Robert's, we'll be order. Could you introduce yourself to the podcast, by the way?
I was out there, I'm with DLV, a town engineer, so. I know we have talked about it before, this is recommendations, so yeah. Either one would be a huge help, not only for us, but again, the town that really keep records of everything. You know, any, any record we have, any plan we have, we can work with them to update. Like I said, all the assets that this town has, and I know I have a little more familiar with the source than just does some use that you can, you can track your site, you can track, I mean, there's endless amount of layers of assets you can create in either urban. Be a benefit to you.
I guess, you know, for the public knowledge, Stan and I discussed a lot of this, our, our long-range goal. Because we do so many things repetitive, you know, even though roads, you don't think it's repetitive, but it really is. Over time, you know, if you had all our roads with an engineering firm doing all the drawings and layer them in, you know, ten years down the road, you don't have to, and essence recreate the wheel. A way to save money for and time for us is to pull up the old layers, go, this is where it was. This is, you know, the change that have happened since that. It makes it easier for everybody to update this stuff. It also allows for like the conservancy to monitor and put in where all of the inlets to the lake are. And, and we know all well that there's a lot of inputs to the lake that aren't even ours. And this is where we want to get to and to know and to understand, you know, the whole dynamic of the way, that's kind of where we want to drive this to. I guess we're going from basically grand drawings all the way to high-end models, but you got to do it at a time and point in time, yeah, with data. The more that we have, I think the better off we are.
Yes, to, to that point, it's something I heard at a meeting. I, I don't know who this question would, would go to, it's like too bad. And you mentioned something about the yacht club and the activities over there. And I have a couple of quality of life questions to be asked. I have not heard you talk about that except in terms of buildings and grounds and safety. And so I want to know if this is their, you know, thing for that.
Well, right now, I, you know, we opened this up to the public. I'd like to keep this discussion on on topic at this point, but at the end of the meeting, we do open it back up to the public, you know.
This is not an open.
Well, it, it is, but I, you know, just from a standpoint of staying on our agenda, we opened it up early so that Todd could provide his professional input into the subject matter at this time. But if you could wait till chat at the end, that would be great. I appreciate that.
I have a question for Todd. Talking about GIS system, we're talking about locating specific valves and limitations and such. Does that also capture elevation? Like the road elevations, we have to resurvey each time we go into new road work to get the right elevations.
To. It would be best to resurvey just from the perspective of somebody makes a new driveway, things change here, here, here. With something like this system, it would be more for the under, I would say. Best, best use of it is for all the underground. And it'll be in the hand of GPS. It'll get you within you know, three to four inches horizontally and six inches vertically.
But back to your room job, you'll have to resurvey.
Yeah, it would be the best.
Any other question?
While, while we have, while we're open and I'd like to go back one slide if we have that. Todd, Todd has been working with us on our five-year road improvements plans. And also has developed the applications for the cost sharing through the Community Prosperance Program. This image shows three areas that we're pursuing brands on through next year. Do you want to pay it from there and kind of describe?
So we, we've talked in the past about beauty areas. So like Dan says, part of the five-year plan, this was some of the remaining roads on that plan. That was presented to us as possibilities. One being White Harbor Drive, the other West Clear Lake Drive between the bridge and Lakeview. And then another one that involves drainage, they all involve some for drainage work as well as pavement. Another one being West Clear Lake Drive out there from seven hundred. And there's a particular area in there where a lot of drainage work, but if we're pursuing, depending on what the town perceives their match to be, we can stretch that part out to cover, you know, more than just full section. So for example, community crossings, they allow up to a one million dollar grant. So to get the most bang for your buck, you're talking for, for the town of Clear Lake, it's a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent match, seventy-five percent being from the state, twenty-five being the town. So to get the most bang for your buck, you're looking at a one point three million dollar project. The town would be at three hundred thirty thousand dollars. So with it, you know, we could throw together estimates for everything. And if the town was, you know, full three hundred and thirty thousand, we can stretch that part three to cover all that, that road section. It's really up to town has months order, what they want to do.
And, and what's the timeline?
We have to have the application in. Uh, we have to have the application in, it's submitted electronically by August thirty first. So, we're getting that applied.
And the notification of award.
Our word has, uh, usually comes in from the state around October. And then you have four months to get it finished, design wise, bid out and under contract from the data that I won't let her. So, we're looking at, uh, we would have to get that all. Put together and bid out and awarded signed contracts in the January to February range.
And I did have those numbers, uh, I had with Darren, and I, I, I agree that if you wanted to go for that million, it can be done. With the three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar.
Because we did.
Uh, partially because of that, but we do have, yeah, we do have some funds, yeah. That we could extend on the budget we're working on.
I don't have any more questions.
I, I do, how, how was the priority determined, or how is maybe it just says part one, two, and three, um, how is that?
Well, I, I can give you a little background, but we should do. Um, Quiet Harbor has been on the books since two thousand eighteen, I believe, it's first removed. And we removed it because there was drainage problems coming from. Landowners on the west side of seven hundred, so I worked with the county to. As you all remember, when they cut that road open and then put another sixteen inch tile. That was the biggest tile that they could put in there because there's also utilities that run underneath there, so they couldn't go any larger, uh. So, in essence, it was from a single sixteen inch tile across seven hundred to two sixteen inch tiles across there. And I knew that the county would be in there with a lot of heavy pressing stuff, and so I, I. Deprived Quiet Harbor in two thousand eighteen, though that got done. And then there was some other drainage issues that we started working through on how to separate the, uh. So, and. Goal, well, lot ten, uh, that open ditch that runs next to it. And how you're gonna take now two sixteens that are finding, or they're way through, uh. I, I think it's a sixteen down to the channel there, so there's been a lot of. Stuff going on down in that area, uh, that we had to work through. Uh, in addition, there was some lots that were being split in that area, uh. So, long story short, this has been on the books and off the books since two thousand eighteen. Uh, the ones labeled number three, the West Clearly Drive one, uh, again, I've made with that area. The, the original flat or that subdivision. And easement or tile, uh, to go from that open ditch on the north side, uh, between lot twenty and twenty-two. And when they put that in, they didn't put the drainage in the easement at all. And they actually ran the pipe underneath the, one of the homeowners' houses. Well, that, that eventually wrote it, or probably it wrote it that house, which then they. Brought in a contractor and used the, uh, liquid concrete and pumped out the house, which in turn freshed pipe. And in addition to that, uh, the homeowner at the time decided to put it in the driveway and pour out more of the pipe. So, long story short, now where it's a mess, um. And what, you know, through you, uh, this group, it was stated, what. Design of a over that it's actually sized correctly for the groundwater that's coming into there. Um, and take it through the easement down through the, uh. The wall at the lake and the channel, and. That's kind of a long story short, but it's, that whole area is a mess and, and it's spring, that whole area.
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, I remember people saying, well, it was the, it was the conservancy, it always seems like it's one thing or the other. Well, my other question, then, and maybe you can clarify Darren, um, because this is not my area of expertise, is with drainage, I know. Many times homeowners, they incur the cost, and so at what point is it. You know, the town's responsibility versus the homeowner's responsibility, if you could clarify, because I don't, I don't know what that is.
And be, before that, I have a point of correction, uh, we're talking about home, uh, at twenty-four. But I believe the actual house that we're talking about is, uh, lot twenty-two.
No, I said between Quiet and.
Well, the, the, uh, creek that runs into it is on the, uh, property of, uh, twenty-two. And the home that was jacked up was, uh, on the property of twenty-two. And not twenty-four, twenty-four's never been jacked up, twenty-two has been, right, and it was twenty-two who, uh, excavated. His driveway, the previous owner, and, uh, the homeowner, if anything, was responsible for damaging it. So I believe as we look at this legal, we may want to look at the homeowner and not just volunteer.
Well, the homeowner no longer owns the home.
But he thought, but they, he bought the problem.
He brought, bought a problem unannounced to him. Well, i- and the thing is that, again, back to Molly's point, there were, there were other factors that. You, you had a conservancy that did a control burn that emptied pretty much every piece of living material on that. Which allowed water to flow faster to that dish. Uh, in addition, there was a tile that was broken from. The pond that was over there that was repaired, which brought in more water to that ditch. So, in essence, we, we also created, or this community created a worse problem for these people in that area. Still on their property, understand.
Yeah, so, so my, so how do, how do we determine when it's our responsibility versus the residents' responsibility? And just because I do know, like, along South Shore. Where we are, there have been several people that have had to pay and incur costs for that, I mean, I know. Just last year, when sellers were doing their things, they had to. You know, they had a lot of things going on and we had to make sure the drain, and I know we've got a drain and we're responsible for managing it. And making sure, whatever, so it just, how is what we do different than what somebody else does? And I, and I don't know the answer to that, Darren, and I, that's why I'm asking the two of you, if you could clarify.
Well, anytime, you know, and I've had this conversation with several people on the South Shore, that, you know, I know the areas that, that flood. And again, they put the drain in because, uh, their yard was, you know, basically wet all the time. Once that water becomes, uh, like it has been right now on West Clear Lake Drive, where it floods all the time, now it's, now it's a safe test. Now it is our problem, so. You know, if, if the drainage is there to relieve your needs spouse, which is part of the whole, you know, design package now, houses. Uh, we never looked at that before, and I think that's, you know. Where that distinction of who owns what, you know, that's.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'm asking, because when I see West Clear Lake, and I understand, because I'm not over there, but, I mean, I. Walk over there probably five out of seven days a week, um. But then I recognize too, the drainage at the one seventy-six to one eighty, I, you know, I see that, and I'm like, yeah, because that water. To me, I see the same because that water is over the road for a sustained amount of period. It, and, and I'm just asking, because coming to find out, you know.
Okay, well, I'll give you some, I'll give you some more.
And that's.
Background of the story.
Not on there.
So, the Quiet Harbor Association, that whole plan, when it was a sad relationship back in nineteen seventy-five, seventy-six, time. Head on drainage expenses on there. Now, once you build a subdivision and you convey that to the town, after you get the roads, everything, all the utilities put in and there. You convey everything to the town. So, in, in my opinion, and this is my opinion, once you convey that to the town, the town takes ownership of that. Yeah, fortunate part is, I was told that when Quiet Harbor conveyed that, they conveyed everything but the drainage. Which former superintendents told me that, that is not possible when you convey, you can face everything. So. There were people on the council before that, that had some agendas, and I think that's the reason why they didn't want to. Take ownership of it, because at the time, flooding coming from seven hundred each, they didn't want to take ownership. But I have never seen a subdivision conveyed with everything except on. You convey it in its entirety.
So my question would be then, was there ever an easement established for between twenty and twenty-two?
Yes, or twenty-two and twenty-four.
So if the easement's established, then aren't we responsible for maintaining the easement since it is considered an easement versus the property, that's what I'm going to call it. Well, I al- I also believe there's probably more to the issue as you go downstream from those homes. Uh, I drive that road routine multiple times a day, and there's probably more flooding being. Uh, carried out, especially with the new garages sending water downstream towards the. Towards the east, uh, so you have that, that creek at twenty-two. And then jump a couple of houses, and that's all downhill, waters to the road, and the flooding that occurs is around. Forty-two and forty-four in that neighborhood, where there's little catch basins and, and a lot takes the water. That is a bigger flood situation on that strip of West Clear Lake than up at twenty-two and twenty-four.
But again, we're looking at this, and if this is truly, you know. Conveyed to the town, which I, I believe it should be, this is the one that's broken, completely broken right now.
I think there's some homeowners probably downstream from that that would disagree. But, so, and, yeah, I s- again, uh. Drain lines to the lake.
But we just, we just jet it out the ones that are down there, my, the houses that you're referring.
So is the goal tonight to identify what applications we want to pursue, what is?
Yeah, yeah, I think we heard from Todd, the timeline is the end of this month, I need to submit applications. Correct, yeah. Is, is there anything else you want to add, Todd, before we close about?
Oh, no, I, I mean, this, just some of the, again, this is just priorities we put together, working with the town that are, you know. So years ago, so if there's anyone that had developed, you know, certainly, I think that under consideration, um. But points, uh, I guess the issue would be, I don't really get this cited on now, so.
Well, why are we?
So just because we apply does not mean we have to take the money, they can say, you guys have submitted these three different applications. They are approved, now I need council to go even further with it, you guys can always decide later. No, we don't want West Clear Lake Drive down. Does that make sense?
So I'd like to make a motion to close public comment.
A second, uh, that's awesome.
Motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Same time. If you have something else to add.
Yeah, so I want to understand, so on the process, so, um, then Todd will put, as I see, completing the grant application, so. Todd and D L C would be putting the grant application together for these three specific projects. And that application is due at the end of the month. And we may or may not get it awarded to us, and that timeframe would be in October. And if it was awarded to us, we as a council can determine what we want, want to move forward with that. That just because the application goes in doesn't mean council. Is saying we want to move forward with these three projects in this order. Is that correct? Is that?
I'm shaking my head, yes, okay, yeah, okay, especially I'll be shocked.
Okay, sorry, I'm good, I'm just like following the notes and trying to understand. Okay, so now, now I'm finished here, thank you. Sorry, this isn't my strong suit, and I'm just learning.
Well, what, uh, what I heard out of the, the dialogue, if I did do any talking, you were doing all listening. Is that, uh, you know, there's a basic question that came up, uh, from council peers, uh, regarding the legal aspects of. Of responsibility. So, we'll have, we'll take that action and see if we, we can, uh. Get clarity on that, uh, and I think the other thing that has come out in this conversation is that the. The paradigm in which, uh, both, uh, Darren and I, uh, look at drainage is that. Is it a health and safety issue to the communities by not addressing it? Um, there are clearly areas that, uh, if nothing's done, is a health and safety issue. And so, uh, we can have that, you know, that kind of, uh, um, uh, debate in the future. Uh, but, uh, I think the other thing that, uh, not necessarily was not said is that if. If we think that the priority is to do a project, um, then we would ask for. Uh, easements to be established for us to maintain it on this point for, uh, forehand drainage lines that. So, that's one of the problems between kind of days. You heard it, drain line set. Yes, agree. But does that capture?
It does, thank you. And can we go back to this, or we make in a recommendation on this, on the? This number.
On the, I think that we're gonna hold off on that, and so. Right around the area.
Yes, yes, I'm still pulling off.
Okay, I just.
I, I did kind of want to give, uh, a preview, uh, of where things are headed. Well, we just took a step back to the G I S, quick question, the, uh. Numbers that we're looking at is for the equipment and the software to locate. It appears that the Smith, we have to do our own locating and, correct me if I'm wrong, and the, uh, Ezra.
No, both of, both of them you could hire out.
Hire them, okay.
I, I would recommend that in order to.
I'm telling you to do that, yes.
Yeah, to establish your database, to try to do it in-house, okay, years.
So the numbers that we're looking at exclude the used. Hiring it out, no, there's, there's a number even at the bottom, at the bottom, okay, that's, okay, I'm with you. Correct, okay, and I'll just, I'll just say this with regards to the G I S, what we would want to do in twenty twenty-two is purchase the hardware and the software. And also start tracking, uh, our volumes of that. And then twenty twenty-three, we would, uh, build the, uh, the various layers.
And trainings included, that would all be part of what we would get worth, duh, duh, thanks. And trainings included, that would all be part of what we would get worth, uh, to that, thanks.
Right, covered a lot of stuff, but I'd like to. Somebody to, uh, correct, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh. Uh, approve DLC and look forward with the, uh, as described, uh, three private projects. Just to discuss.
My motion, do I have a second?
This is George, I'll second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussions? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Both same time. All right, uh, I think that's all of the old business. Uh, items up, new to. Plan commission, community, your changes. Ranking, recommendation.
And, uh, let me take, uh, take this through this section. Um, first of all, let's say that the, uh, the plan commission, uh, has now held three meetings, May fourth, June seventh, and August second. Rehearing the last, uh, most recently rehearing the last two of the twenty-three video changes table by town council. On November fifteenth, uh, of last year. Each change, uh, was discussed embedded individually by the plan commission considering compliance to a comprehensive plan, uh, public sentiments. Uh, mitigation of any unintended consequences. And then opened up for public comment before the plan commission voted, uh, either favorably, recommend favorably, unfavorably, or no recommendation. And again, I want to, to thank the, uh, plan commission publicly for, for the hard work, uh, in getting us to this point. Where we've reheard now, uh, after tonight, all twenty-three changes, uh, during the summer season, so. Um, it was a lot of effort, I appreciate, uh, everybody's, uh. Efforts on that. The two changes, uh, included tonight for council have been certified by the plan commission, even though this copy that's being displayed didn't have a signature, it does. Um, and, uh, one received, uh, a favorable recommendation and one received an unfavorable recommendation. I'll now provide an executive summary of the, the change, you have the detailed, uh, changes in your package. Uh, exhibit A received a favorable recommendation that was change number twenty eighteen dash thirty-eight. And, uh, just, uh, kind of an overview, this change, uh, simply was updating the science standard, uh, removing reference to type one. And type two home business, which were replaced by a previous change with a single home business standard. And, uh, if you want, uh, for anybody of interest, that was, uh, twenty eighteen dash oh six, which has already been approved. The plan commission voted to forward a favorable recommendation on this change. And, uh, I'll open it up to, uh, any questions at this point that the council may have. I'll say no comments. Um, looking then at the second change, um, this is, uh, in exhibit B. This particular one received, uh, an unfavorable recommendation, it's twenty eighteen dash thirty-seven. The change, uh, required home businesses, the original change required home businesses to, uh. Get an I O P improvement location permit. Uh, the change was originally conceived, uh, to support a much more detailed home business standard. They had many operational requirements, uh, that has now been replaced by a greatly simplified standard focusing on the control of nuisance. And is there any questions, uh, on this particular one?
Uh, unless, I can't read, uh, the, uh, recommendation from the plan commission on this says favorable. Bottom of it. Yeah, it wants to be unfavorable. The bottom of the page, uh, which, uh, twenty, the, thirty-seven. At twenty eighteen thirty-seven, go to the bottom of the page, uh, it was turned down, but yet it says very favorable. Yeah, it's item six, item six.
Uh, okay. Should that be unfavorable? It should be. Without last. Any other comments? All right, um, so the business, uh, hand is that ordinance twenty twenty-two dash away has been prepared. Amending the Clear Lake Unified Development Ordinance effective January first, twenty twenty-three with consideration by council. And I would like to, uh, introduce ordinance twenty twenty-two dash away.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
It's Molly, I'll second then.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For same time.
Ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-two dash oh eight, and ordinance amending the Clear Lake Unified Development Ordinance. Whereas on September first, two thousand nine, unified development ordinance officially replaced all previous zoning. And subdivision control ordinances. Whereas the unified development ordinance has been amended several occasions since its adoption. Whereas on August second, twenty twenty-two, the Clear Lake Plan Commission held a hearing addressing portion of the tax of the amended unified development ordinance. That required further amendment. And whereas, the Clear Lake Plan Commission, after proper notice and hearing as required by statute. Certified the text changes to the unified development ordinance as amended on August second, twenty twenty-two. Which are attached here to as exhibit A with a favorable recommendation and exhibit B with an unfavorable recommendation. To the town council of the town of Clear Lake Indiana. Now therefore being ordained by the town council of the town of Clear Lake Indiana. That. The text changes to the unified development ordinance, which are attached here to as exhibit A, are hereby adopted and incorporated into unified development ordinance. By the town council, the town of Clear Lake Indiana, and exhibit B are hereby not adopted. And incorporated into unified development ordinance by the town council of the town of Clear Lake Indiana. That this ordinance shall be in full words in effect of January first, twenty twenty-three, passed and adopted by the town council of Clear Lake Indiana the sixteenth day of August twenty twenty-two. So I would make a, uh, a motion to open for public comment and question.
A second then. A motion in a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Both same time. For public comment.
Hearing none, I would make a motion to close for public comment.
A motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Same time, motion carried.
So this completes the first reading of ordinance, uh, number twenty twenty-two dash oh eight. President, I'll make a motion to the secondary by title only.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
George, I'll second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion carries.
Reading by title. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh eight, ordinance amending the Clear Lake Unified Development Ordinance. This completes the second public reading ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash oh eight. I would make a motion. Pass and adopt ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-two dash oh eight as written.
None, uh, uh, none as written. And we need correction on it to be.
Well, the, the ordinance only refers to exhibit A and exhibit B as favorable and unfavorable, okay? So I think it's self-correcting. Great, okay.
Could we go, uh, correct this copy just for the record?
Sure. So I would make, uh, I will rescind my original motion, make following motion, uh, to pass and adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh eight as written. With an updated corrected version of exhibit B, syndicating unfavorable.
I'll second that motion. I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same, there is. All right, before we want to be, um. Is there any reason that Todd needs to stay or first? God fucking. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your questions.
Heard you guys, all right, yeah. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
All right, uh, item B, ordinance creation of donation.
All right, I'll, I'll take us through this, um. Uh, there have been, uh, several opportunities in this year that, uh, were appropriate to receive, uh, donations to support special occasions and activities. Activities within the town, however, the town does not currently have a method of receiving donations. Ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-two dash oh nine has been prepared to create a donation fund. To receive donations for the purpose of financial support of special events, uh, within the town of Clear Lake. I would move to introduce ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh nine.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
It's Molly, I'll second that.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time, motion carries.
The ordinance, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh nine. Ordinance to create the Clear Lake Special Miscellaneous and Activities Donation Fund. Whereas interest has been expressed for the creation of the donation fund to support special miscellaneous and activities provided by the town within the town. And whereas it is desirable to establish a fund to receive donations to the town of Clear Lake Indiana. Which are for the purpose of financial support of special events miscellaneous and activities within the town of Clear Lake Indiana. Now therefore being ordained by the town council of the town of Clear Lake Indiana as follows, section one. The Clear Lake Special Miscellaneous and Activities Donation Fund is hereby established. Section two, funds donated to the town of Clear Lake for the Clear Lake Special Events Donation Fund shall be used exclusively for the purpose. Of supporting special miscellaneous activities within the town, which are conducted by the town. Section three, the funds received by the town for the Clear Lake Special Events Donation Fund are unbedded. And may be extended for the purposes set or in section two, as directed by the town council. Section four, this ordinance shall be retroactive, uh, back to July first, twenty twenty-two. Ordinance adopted, uh, this, uh, sixteenth day of. August, uh, twenty twenty-two. How clearly, yeah. So I would make a motion to, uh, open for public comment and question.
Motion do I have a second?
George, I'll second that.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Open for public.
Hearing none, I would make a motion to close public comment.
Motion do I have a second?
George, I'll second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
This completes the first reading of ordinance, uh, number twenty twenty-two dash oh nine. I would make a motion to suspend the rules of order, allowing for a second reading by title.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
It's Molly, I'll second that.
In a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, motion carries.
Reading title, ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh nine, ordinance to create the Clear Lake Special Miscellaneous and Activities Donation Fund. This completes the second public reading ordinance, twenty twenty-three dash oh nine. And I would make a motion to pass and adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh nine and that's written.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I would. When can we debate this? Oh, now, wow, now, yeah, yeah, I just, I have a concern about, uh, the need for this, uh, ordinance. Uh, it's, it's usually worded like special events and activity film. And, uh, I think we're a town and not an activity center, well concerned about having, uh, funds set up for donation. If I understand, we now have twenty-one funds, this would be twenty-two funds, and we're just adding more funds. Uh, we already in our community have three organizations. That do community service, whole defense, et cetera, they're all five oh one C threes, they're all deductible, we give to them the, uh. Association, uh, insurgency and, uh, sailing clubs, sort of, well, and that. And the priority, but it is a five oh one C three, yeah, but, so I, I just. I'm uncomfortable with the town. Posturing itself into an active center, having donations for activities. Uh, I believe in the past, we've received donations without a, uh, ordinance to handle that. So we had an ordinance for the boat, okay.
Yeah, we had an order for marine patrol.
But, yeah, for the, two years ago or so, in the situation.
Yep.
So that was.
And just for, uh, we do have a couple residents out there that are wanting, uh, to be able to hand. Some money my way and I cannot accept it because I don't have a fund for.
That takes an ordinance to establish that fund.
Correct, yeah, and, yes, yep.
To determine where the money goes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that way it doesn't end up in sewer or street.
If it goes into the general fund, it will just get lost with it.
Do we have an ordinance that, that directs the, by the way, association fund?
So we do have a fund, it's at Zero right now, and that was for the boobies. Yeah.
But was there an ordinance that?
That, that fund, yeah, yeah, you can't open a fund without. Okay.
I have a motion on the floor, but I do not have a second.
It's Molly, I'll second that. Good discussion.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Uh, I didn't see budget progress. Jessica, right?
Um, you know. Basically, this is very similar to what we saw at the last meeting when we outlined the process. And both Dan and myself and Jessica met last night on schedule to have a discussion prior. To our following meeting where it will be presented to council members of the general public. We just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that we were holding to the timeline and will be moving forward at the next.
So at the next meeting, we'll have a specific budget?
Correct.
Uh, will council have a chance to see that or that?
Yes, it will be available in our packets prior to the meeting.
There is a restriction, however, we can only reduce, not increase, but. Correct, around this.
Right, and it will actually be published, um. Minimum of ten days prior to, um, the meeting, but my deadline is around the August twenty-sixth to have it finalized, published with the DL, uh, DLGF. And then send it out to you guys, it's, you guys should have ample opportunity. And then send it out to you guys as well. You guys should have ample opportunity to.
Okay, as soon as you publish it, if we can get it.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll also publish um the tax rate stuff on the website.
Any other questions?
I think that concludes the items on the new business. Um, item A, training and review, Robert Paul with orders.
My talk is not here, so you're stuck with me presenting, which could be very scary or it could be a benefit. Um. Because Brent shared Robert's rules, we all know how comprehensive it is. Um, what I'll do tonight is just highlight a couple of points and then I, I think it would be important for us to post this on the website, um, so that's what we'll work to do, as George and I are working to update the website. Um, there, there's a lot to cover. Um, I think the point is Robert's rules of order is to make sure that all of our meetings are run fair. And that we're efficient in what we're doing and that we're orderly, and that's important, not just for us, but for all of you. Um, we want to try to follow the parliamentary procedure. I know there have been some meetings recently where there's, you know, we've had to have some help. And so there is, um, the attorney, the town attorney has put together some kind of a cheat sheet on parliamentary procedure, so I think we'll make that available. That's also been shared with Dan, um, to share with the entire Plan Commission, uh, since Dan is the chairperson for Plan Commission, as well as Jim Plain, since he is the chair of the BZAs, so that everybody has that. Um, as everybody knows, you have to establish the quorum and have an agenda. If you have an agenda, I'll make it available. Um, from a procedure perspective, I think that's what we're talking about tonight, the motions, the seconds, when we open it up for public comment. Voting, um, and you can always abstain, I think it was, I think it was the last meeting Brent abstained for from um a vote which you're, everybody's allowed to do. Um, you want to also, um, we can't conduct a vote as council by secret ballot, and that's because of the Indiana Open Door Law. Of that, we went through as part of our training for last month's meeting, so you're all very familiar with that. The motions can be, there's a variety of different motions you can make. There can be the main motion, uh, secondary motion, incidental motions, all what we've tried to practice here, and hopefully we do it within reason. Um, I think the one thing that has been a topic of a lot of discussion in our community are meeting minutes. And meeting minutes do not need to be exhaustive and have every single detail in it. They just really need to have the highlights and who first and second. And that was part of why earlier this evening I was clarifying on Zoom that somebody really does want more in-depth detail of what happened in our meetings. They can get the um access to Zoom meeting replay, and that's where they would work with Jessica and, you know, Phil Altice to work to have them. Um, I have, that's all I'm gonna say right now, just so we can get to the public. Can you put that away?
Molly's bringing up, she hears the real one, right?
Yeah, and we're not all.
Yeah, I don't have that mind. So it's a team, and that's where, you know, we have, you guys, you know, have been pitched in before too, so that's all I'm doing.
Yeah, could I, I just asked that that uh became one of our changes.
Yeah. I didn't realize she had kind of planned Sunday evening. Miss Betty.
That's okay. I had to wait to get it from Mike, but we were all in agreement. Uh, Jordan, Larry and I worked with Mike on this, so.
Thank you, Molly. Anything else, council?
Yeah. I would first like to mention that over the last twelve months, whenever time permits, I've tried to attend the BZA and the Planning Commission meetings. Um, I've noticed an increase in both the attendance and the participation, and I'd like to thank the general public for that, as well as the town council meetings. Uh, it's important to making the lake what we all want to seek and what we all want it to be. With that being said, I'd also like to encourage all of our residents and property owners, if you have any interest on the BCA or the Planning Commission, please reach out to your council person and express that interest so they know, because there's going to be various times where spots will be open. And if we don't know, a community member wants to be involved, we don't know to ask. So if anybody has any interest, please uh encourage them to reach out to their council. The second thing I wanted to talk about was a process improvement step, and that would be for council members being at town hall and trying to avoid any issues with the sunshine wall. And in addition to that, being transparent to the town employees. And that suggestion's going to be very simple, is create a calendar that is shared by all the council members and outlook, so we can essentially reserve time in the conference room. So we don't have, uh, for example, if Molly and I are meeting with the fire department and Darren is planning on coming in and talking to Larry about something with the streets, we're at three people. And technically, when we are outside of these meetings, we cannot have that. So it's a way to do that. In addition to that, in our code of ethics, we don't want any of the council members to prevent any of our town employees from doing their work to the full extent. So by taking this step to let them know that we're going to be here on the calendar, I think it'd also be important to let them know why a council member is here and to let them know what the goals are. So they know, so we're being transparent with the employees and we're taking these steps to avoid uh conflicts of interest. If we have multiple meetings, uh, Dan mentioned, we've got uh the trash collection coming up, we've got the fire contract coming up, so there's going to be situations where we will have multiple, the need for multiple council members to be here. So just would like everybody to think about that uh until the next meeting, and maybe we take some steps to work with the process similar. Obviously open for suggestions to improve, but.
Actually, we've got that at work. We've got a uh, we term the uh conference room as a person, and they get invited. That way it it gets put on the calendar and reserved at the same time, so. Not a bad idea since we now are all.
But I also think it's important to check in with the town hall because there are other organizations. I know Chris S's detective meetings here. Uh, so we actually have a calendar in the office for Clear Lake. It's extension and sound and subject. If you do a calendar like that.
We could make Jim.
Yeah.
Available, the calendar available to, that way she can populate it at the same time.
He might show up and this might not be.
Well, it may, it may be better then to have it across the board for all the town employees, because then if one of the council members has set up the, the time slot properly, it would also state in there what they're doing and what the goal is. So then if somebody's like, why is Brent here? Why is Brent camped out in the, in a conference room all morning? And they can just look at the calendar, they can see, oh, he's in there working on the fire, the fireplace. So that way, they know why I'm here and what the extended goal is.
One of the other things, you know, most of the time, like my uh person that emailed me on the G I S stuff, I can get on there and put the stuff in, I don't have access necessarily to your calendar. I need, I need to be able to do whatever I want. So we need to figure out in some way, but I know that, you know, in the past, we ended up with three of the same vicinity that challenged on that before.
Well, Team Stuns have a calendar.
Yeah, but somehow we need to make sure that everybody, BCA, Plan Commission, all, all those, because in essence, you could have two council members. Your Plan Commission people in the same area too, so. It's trying to.
Yeah, and that's the reason I wanted to bring it up, and with this solution, that's the problem.
Thanks. Y'all have any other thoughts? Alright, I'll open it up to the public.
Die hard.
Yeah, I know. Does anybody happen to know what?
Um, I know she had called last week in regards to the fish kill. So I, I, I mean, she talked about water quality and stuff, so I, I'm assuming.
Well, we actually, uh, stopped there. We actually made the national, and that's sad, actually. Uh, fish kill, it came up, it's that, it's the title, and it's why it's clearly Indiana. Basically what happened was uh eat. And basically it took the action and stepped out of the water, so. Yeah.
Yeah, the conservancy's done, you know, an article on it.
But yeah, we made them.
That's good.
Any other questions? Thanks for hanging with us.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah.
Oh, make a motion to call.
Well, and you guys, we're laughing about this because in Robert's rules, there are multiple ways to close meetings. You can never, because by all, the chair asks if there's any other business and that comes, the chair closes by itself without a question, so anyway. I told it, I have, no, I have a motive, so have a motive, and do I have a second?
George, I'll second it.
A motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you all.